Six o'clock. Special meeting in Henderson City Council Wednesday, November 12th, 2025 is called order. Business we are attending to is the parking lot for the trailer that was recently completed.
Do you need me to tee this up?
Sure.
We have a major issue, or what I'm going to call a major issue, concerning the parking lot. As you guys probably know by now, for whatever reason, the striping does not meet contract spec that you guys had authorized this project based on. And I'm not 100% sure how that happened, who's ultimately responsible for it, but I do know this, the city of Henderson has no liability in this thing. You guys have a contract. The contract is very specific as to how that parking lot is to be striped. It's my understanding there should be 13 spots. There's not 13 spots. How many is there?
10.
And I don't know how that happened, but I mean, there was some sort of a major breakdown in communication somewhere. At any rate, it needs to be fixed. If it's not fixed, the city's going to pursue getting this fixed because this was a lot of money and the contract is very clear that it's supposed to be 13 slots. I did have a question. Is, are we 100% sure that that ADA spot meets ADA specs?
As designed, yes. As placed, no.
Okay. Okay. So we got that to deal with as well. And so we need to come up with a solution on this and one relatively quickly. Are the asphalt plants shut down?
No.
Okay. So something could be fixed yet this year?
Yeah. And so, and that's what I've requested is fixes from the contractor, I don't know how many times now. So every time they come back with a fix, it's kind of the same thing they suggested previously. So I did send over to Tim earlier today, the latest email I got from the contractor, which was exactly what they said they wanted to do before, which is grinding removal of the incorrect markings or water blasting removal, both of which would damage the pavement surface. So if the option is milling, if they cannot remove it, the options are to basically start the blank slate, whether that's milling overlay, which is probably the highest level type of repair, micro-surfacing or seal coat, micro-surfacing. Seal coat you're probably familiar with because city, that is on your city streets already. The difference would be that we'd ask them to fox seal it afterwards so it gets a black surface. There's also micro-surfacing, which is a kind of a, kind of like seal coating, but it would be to cover the pavement with a thin emulsion and then provide a new blank slate so that everything be re-stripped. Those are options that I presented to the contractor and they have not agreed or presented alternate options to those.
Milling would be taking one of the lifts off?
Correct. Yes. So there's four inches of black top out there, it's placed in two even lifts, or I think two and a half inches and one and a half inches. So they just take that top off and then replace it. So I did calculate the cost of doing such an improvement at the prices that the contractor provided for the original bid. The cost of milling overlay is about $9,000 to $10,000 construction cost. So that is my rough estimate based on the size of the parking lot and the prices they provided.
And they haven't agreed to a milling overlay?
They have not agreed to anything.
What's their defense to this? What are they saying? I mean, how do they justify deviating from the contract like that?
Yeah. So the information they provided to us is that as far as the actual work itself, we were told the week four is going to happen, I think maybe Wednesday or so, I can't remember the call exactly, that they in the following Tuesday to complete the paving markings in the driveway and the parking lot. They came through Monday instead, so we did not have any onsite here when they, when they came through. So that was the communication part where we didn't know they're doing the work until we get a phone call. So that is how the work was installed incorrectly.
Did you guys get a call before or after?
We had a call during the work.
Okay. Did you guys tell, hey, stop?
We didn't tell them to stop, but the plan is pretty clear. It's, uh, yes.
You did not tell them to stop?
We did not tell them to stop.
Well, as I see this, we have a contract with SEH. We have a contract with WW. It doesn't matter to me what the striping contractor done did, has no relationship with us except as a subcontractor to WW. I'm really dissatisfied because as I understand it, there's been conjecture as to what was communicated between the strippers and your inspector, and I think it was handled very poorly, and I want this fixed. I don't believe that the, using their numbers at cost is going to protect the city. I think what we need is for you guys to go find a contractor and get other bids for what it would take to do a milling overlay, and that's what we will base our correction on.
Yeah. So $10,000 is my estimate as far as.
That won't do a driveway.
I understand. So I mean, that's what I was going to get as $10,000 is our estimate. We do have the allowance for 250% of that cost to be held as retainage. That is, it's after 60 days after substantial completion, you're supposed to either reduce retainage down to 1% or 250% of the remaining work. In this case, the remaining work would be correction of the parking lot. And so a $10,000 estimate means that you withhold $25,000 until it's corrected.
I don't think that's enough to get it done.
Yeah. And we can request, so I can request estimates. I can also request the bonding agency, the surety basically, to make sure it's corrected. And then in that instance, if WW doesn't do it for the surety, then the surety finds someone else to do it in their, in their place. So in either instance, it would be anywhere cost this city now. Having a surety do it, the surety's more likely to just be able to put more pressure on them to do it because they won't get a bond for the next project if they aren't performing. So that is, that is an option as well.
Were they invited to the meeting here tonight?
WW or the surety?
WW.
No. I requested they provide them to provide a plan for how to make the repairs prior to noon today, and all I got was an email on Monday with two pictures. I did have one missed phone call from the striping company today. I called them back and didn't get a response back, but our contract is also, the city's contract is not with, with Sur lines a lot. It's with WW block top.
Right.
So my request right now, with the WW block top, I can find a repair to, to satisfy the city's, well, not requirement, but just basically give the product that they're expecting to receive.
You said you recommend them to take care of this? WW, did I miss here?
Uh, WW is, well, it's on WW to make their repair. Whether they complete the work themselves or hire someone else to do it or whatever it takes. But what's, what is kind of funny is a little bit is the obvious time of year right now. So milling overlay, block top, block top will probably run in next week. I'm guessing they're going to shut down. This might be the last full week and then probably whatever, maybe a little bit next week. But if it does go to snow or rain, they might just shut down. Anything, anything coming into a seal coat or fox seal or micro-surfacing, pavement has to be at least 60 degrees and the ambient temperature is at least 50 degrees. So we have about three more days for that, and then that's not going to happen again probably for the rest of the year.
And if we don't do it until the spring, which frankly is probably the more preferable route, the two-year warranty would start then.
Yeah. Two-year correction period is after final payment to the contractor or so. So if anything else pops up or catches on the project, you have two years after you make that final payment.
Did they get the punch list items done?
They were supposed to be out here last week, well, the week before last, last week, and then now this week to do the trailer repairs. That's all within the correction period. So the project is substantially complete from the point of having the contract work done.
Yeah.
But the corrections are supposed to be made before freeze-up, and I hadn't seen that. So no defense to them, but they probably are stretched everywhere right now this time of year. So that is not, not excused, but that's my expectation is they are somewhere else under a tight deadline just as much.
Are they responsible for the street sign that's still in my yard?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a street sign that's in my yard too.
So at our last meeting, didn't we vote to withhold the last payment until this was completed? So if that's the case, can we withhold payment until the spring?
We can say it on the contract.
Or do we have to pay, do everything except the $25,000?
Yeah. I mean, if we don't, we're arguably in breach of the contract, but they have already breached the contract in my opinion. They haven't built it according to spec. I mean, you know, they probably should be paid something. The question is how much? I'd be inclined frankly not to pay them anything, at least until we have an agreement on what's going to happen, you know, on this milling overlay. I'm assuming you guys are not going to want, you know, some sort of micro-surfacing or some sort of, you're going to, you're, you're probably going to want to go for a milling overlay to make sure that this is done right.
Well, at this point with no adequate response from the contractor as to how the situation is going to be rectified, yeah, I'm for that, and I think it's going to go to the surety bond myself.
So you're, you're thinking that the milling overlay is only going to be $9,000, $10,000?
Yeah. The size of the parking lot I calculated is about 80 tons of black top and $90 a ton.
Yeah, but the milling is.
Yep. The milling process would be in there too, and that's, yeah, for about 1,500 bucks to do that. So that's, that's my estimate based on prices that were in the contract.
I don't think we can use their pricing because they won't come back for it. They'd be foolish to.
Yeah. And that's where the 250% kind of comes in. So that's, that's.
How much are we holding?
Right now it's 5%, which is probably $14,000 withholding.
How much do we retain from SEH until this is rectified?
Yeah. I can't tell you that. I guess we'll.
Well, I'm, I'm serious. I mean, literally, we hired you guys as inspectors. It shouldn't have happened. It's your liability and WW's liability are, you're the only ones that are liable for this. And I am, I'm sorry, but that's my position on it.
I mean, looking at the contract, the 4.03 damages. Parties also recognize delays, expense difficulties involved, and what could they do? Or if the work is not completed on time, really damages for delay, if that's just delay.
Yeah. There's a possibility that if we get into.
Because it is delayed.
A real litigation situation, you know, you may have some liquidated damages there for not timely completing a project.
Contract will still pay owner $1,200 for each day that expires after the time?
Correct.
I mean, if we have a.
Done?
I mean, if they're not, if we're still waiting on the trail repairs and the parking lot is messed up, I guess we have a rate to follow the contract.
Yeah. Correct. So we liquidate damages for two milestones essentially. One is substantial completion. That's completion of all contract work. Another is file completion. They are different amounts, substantial completions, everything that's supposed to be out there minus any corrections that need to be made. So they are at that point. That's the point we did our walkthrough of the project. So the final completion is going to be basically completion of the punch list repairs and filing paperwork and things like that. They are differing amounts. So the point of substantial completion, liquidated damages is to cover, you say they worked 40 days, they worked 45 days, you have somebody out there five more days watching them do work, that's to cover that cost.
And they did not meet the timeline for substantial completion?
They did not.
How, how far off?
They were off by a week.
By one week?
Yes.
Seven days?
They were off by, I should I correct that, they were off by about four days from the point of getting the paving done, and then the rest of that week they did the top soiling, and then they came back two weeks later to the striping and signing. So if you were to use all contract work, it'd be closer to three weeks. But it's kind of a point of, it's not going to be defendable probably for three weeks at $1,200 a day if it's missing signs. Yeah.
So we, it would be $1,200 a day for seven days?
Yeah. One week would certainly be very defendable, I think, if they didn't get the, it was not a usable site until they had done the top soiling and paving.
The striping.
Yes.
The handicap spot, which does not qualify as a handicap spot, will we be liable if there is any injury or mishap because that parking lot is sitting there wrong?
I'm not sure if I can answer that question.
I would say yes, the potential.
Say yes to it.
The potential is there.
After closing.
Yeah. I'm really unhappy about this.
The potential is there.
Yeah.
Especially when people losing it. I see people parked there unloading their bikes.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And I'm off topic. It's like squirrel. But if they're unloading bikes and going on the trail, okay. Because somebody's going to just biff it on those repairs that we're waiting for, where the, it's like the pavement ends, there's nothing, and then, yeah.
Yeah. As far as, on the project, as far as repairs go, they have one extensive repair, which is on the north end where they have a wheel rut. And they're going to do a milling overlay on that to, to correct that. So that's, you're going to have a loaded, side loading dump truck onto there, that area, which was obviously, the results are what happens when you do something like that. And then there's a couple, a couple of spots where there's some gouges in there. The gouges are people probably would have considered to be more of a safety hazard if someone's rollerblading or something and, you know, he knows there's a little rock and those kinds of things. Probably, likely something they could do if they, for some reason, couldn't get full black top out there in the small repairs, whether it's some sort of patching. But I wouldn't consider the long stretch to be a safety hazard at this point.
That sunstone, is that, is that?
Oh, that's on the trail. That's got nothing to do with us.
Got it. Okay.
That got rectified today.
So what's left for punch list items?
It is just the trail, the black top repairs. Yeah.
And the sunstone.
Sorry, yes, is high.
Realistically, can we get that done yet?
Every time I ask them, they say they're going to be out here. So their answer is yes, but until they show up, I'm not sure what to say. If the, if the pavement drops down too cold next week, which it very well could, milling overlay may not be a good option. Getting the pavement, the surfaces to stick would be my concern. They use tack oil for that, but yeah.
Well, this is what I'm going to recommend to you gags. At this point in time, no additional payments to anyone on this project until we have a firm understanding as to what is going to happen with this parking lot, these punch list items. Nothing gets paid, nothing. We got clear breach in the contract. If they now want to allege that we're breaching by not paying, I think it's very defendable why we're not paying. And nothing gets paid until we have a resolution regarding this, these punch list items and, and the parking lot. And we'll need a motion for that.
Well, what about special damages after contractor achieves substantial completion? If contractor shall neglect, refuse, or fail to complete the remaining work within the contract terms, contractor should reimburse owner or the owner, right? I'm guessing. For the actual costs reasonably incurred by the owner for engineering, construction, observation, inspection, administrative services needed after the time specified in paragraph 4.02 for work to be completed and ready for final payment. So who's paying us to sit here and who's paying for our attorney, who's paying for Tim's time to handle through all of this stuff too? Because this is costing us resources too, having to fight through some stripes. So we write up a change order for our time?
Well, we could, we could do a D-Duck off of the final payment.
And I just, I just want to see this fixed. This is ridiculous.
I want to see an agreement on this, how it's going to be fixed, which is a milling overlay. At this point, that's what we're saying we want, and we're not going to negotiate that any further because they haven't responded in a timely or realistic fashion.
Yes. And we were leading on the week that they, they went over on a week. They never asked for more time. They never communicated that they were running behind. I think it says in here that our project manager is going to keep a log and tell us, and, and the contractor is going to explain to us, hey man, we have delays because of this. I think they allow for three weather days in each of the three months that this timeframe is set up. If there was weather issues, that should be documented somewhere. I don't know if it is, I assume.
Yeah. This was a working days contract, so we did a substantial completion date, but we allowed them to start, to decide when they start.
Exactly.
So we allowed.
As long as it was 42 days prior to the completion date.
Yeah. So if they, they started exactly 42 days prior to substantial completion, so they started the last day, they probably could have, well, could have still got the work done. So as far as, trying to think of some of this here, but with, with the calendar, the schedule is completely, I guess, in their hands as far as when they're going to start and end it. So it's September 19th, I think, of substantial completion, and that was based on the thought that the next project to the north would be completed around that same time so that we'd be able to do some sort of a grand opening altogether, the two projects. And so that was, that's where that date came from. So, and that allows a little lot of time for corrections as needed.
Well, I have concerns about any other method other than what Keith is talking about, and that's the milling overlay. Because we talked about some other alternatives and every one of them, I didn't get real assurance that there wouldn't be the potential of those stripes bleeding through after a period of time. So I think that's the best course.
We should get a motion on that, that the council's recommended fix to this is a milling overlay.
Also move.
Second.
Motion made second. I don't appear to have a signature. I.
Aye.
Both. Motion made to carry.
We should get a motion that no additional money be expended towards this project until we have a solution to the parking lot issue.
Okay. Where do we have payment right now?
There's a check sitting back.
Hold a check.
We're holding a check. Holding the substantial completion. We're, we're holding the balance, the final payment.
The balance due?
Yes.
That's about a third of the total cost or what?
Yeah. I think that's about it.
I'm sorry, who is covering? Okay.
$60,000.
So 20% roughly of what is due. Okay? And then we, whether 10 grand covers this or not is immaterial, but we'll figure, find that out, right? So we can't incur any costs in this. So if this is substantially more than 10 grand, does that come out of the check we have?
Well, it sounds like a pawn or the surety.
Sure. You could go on the performance bond.
If it costs more than that.
Correct.
Or if they never come back.
Essentially, what you do is you draw on the bond. I mean, there's a process to do that. And as he indicated, that is a real black eye for a contractor.
But at what point could we do that?
When we don't, when we, when we don't have a solution to this and when they're not willing to engage?
That's tonight, but literally, how much time do we have to give them? Do we have to allow them to go into July of next year?
No, we don't have to allow them to go that far.
We want this done by mid-May at the latest. Because the grand opening is May 2nd, first, whatever date it is. It'd be nice to have it done by then. I thought the grand opening of the trail is May 1st or so.
We should be able to get somebody in the milling overlay it before then.
But it's like it could be snowing it in April.
Black top plants won't be open. They won't be open until road restrictions come off and then this is slow start.
Yeah.
And there may be interim repairs that can be made if that's for such a reason for that. But it is, as far as non-performance of the contract, when I get to this stage on projects, which luckily doesn't happen too often, but it's to write a letter to the contractor saying they're not performing the contract, and then include the contract language saying these are liquidated damages and these are remaining work. And then we'd send that to the contractor and their surety at the same time, their performance bond would be part of that, and then it's notification. And once the, once the performance bond company that's holding that, I think it's Western Surety or, usually it is Western Surety, I guess, we would have them, well, once they're notified they're going to call the contractor, the pressure I'm putting on will be less than they'll get from them. So, and maybe that's what it takes is just make it obvious that what the intent is and expectations are here. Because they've been communicating multiple times in phone calls and emails to the contractor. And so that's my, that's usually my next step if I get to point liquidated damages or any other kind of corrections, bring the surety into it. I have not had, have a surety come in and perform the work in lieu of the contractor because they know what that means to them for the next project like I mentioned. So I don't expect that you'll need to go through a third party, but that is what the surety would do.
I've never had to in 24 years. I've come close, but I've never had to actually levy or start that process. And I don't think we would have to in this case. I mean, this looks to me to be pretty cut and dry. You've got, expect, they're supposed to have 13 slots. They've only got 10. Frankly, I don't even know why we're sitting here, I guess.
Well, did we do the motion?
To payment, did we do that?
Yeah. To withhold payment until we have a solution.
We kind of voted on that last meeting. Do we need to do it again?
Well, let's do it. I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion made second. I don't appear to have a signature. Saying aye.
Aye.
Both.
And if we have something between now and your regular meeting next week, we readdress it. If we don't have anything, we don't readdress it.
Right.
I think we should get on a conference call, me, Tim, and you with them. I can carve out some time tomorrow or Friday.
Okay. Yeah, that is right for me.
All right. And you're still overseeing this process if it goes into spray and working with them and getting schedule and understanding what's going on and they're going to be in the loop? You're still, based on being the construction manager sort of?
Yeah. So not construction manager, we're doing administration on this one mostly just, you know, ideally this is a project where we're out there doing processing, pay applications, doing some initials of state aid in the county and all that kind of stuff is what's supposed to be involved into it. We're taking that to that one next level here. So as of right now, we're still trying to get the contract done here. So if the contractor is not performing and takes more work, that's really good. Again, just coming, because we may have more costs incurred to make them do that work or find someone else to do the work, then we request reimbursement for that and not come from the contractor through liquidated damages, so.
I just have a question here. In terms of this whole striping process, you know, should you guys have been out there to approve?
Uh, we are, in our contract, we do not have that we have to be out there.
Well, I didn't ask you that.
Yes. Normally we'd be out there, we had planned to be out there with the contractor.
Yeah.
It's, so you don't, that, that plan right there is not the striping plan. So the striping plan is in the full bid documents. There's a detail showing exactly where I start spacing, and quite honestly, it's, it's an industry standard for parking lots. So there's really not a lot we should have to do for something like this.
But I mean, we paid for that engineering service.
Uh, you paid for construction observation. We're out there, we're not out there, they weren't paying for us to be out there. So we were, keep in mind on this project, we had construction observation as a part-time basis. We're going to have somebody up here all the time during the construction, trying to keep those costs down. So unfortunately, when they come out and they don't tell you, it's kind of hard to, to make that work. Now we can call them off, but we can't control the contractor. We could say, don't do the work, and we could still.
Is that a sub of WW that did the striping?
Yes. Yeah. So Sur lines lot was a subcontractor.
And they're held harmless? I mean, WW is not a weak, you can.
They've, they've got a contract between those two.
Yep. They're working, working through, work through each other, so.
I mean, the way I kind of see this thing shaking out, it, no offense here, but I see that there's multiple layers to this onion and multiple points of liability. but I see that there's multiple layers to this onion and multiple points of liability. But I do know that the city of Henderson is not viable for any of this, and, you know, we, we want what we paid for, and what we have right now isn't that. Exactly. So, course forward is clear?
That is it?
Well, at least, was the two motions we put in place.
Okay.
We're not paying for it, and...
We're pursuing WW to...
To redo it.
Put in the details and get it in place and have it done.
From WW or from...
Middle Bay. I'd like to see a hard deadline on this thing. I know weather's gonna factor, too, but I don't want this to linger until July. We've already...
It's gotta be done.
This has been kicked down the road enough.
Yeah, it could have been rectified immediately.
It could have been rectified immediately.
Well, the only way that we, if, if this is incredibly time-sensitive, the only way that we have control over that is then if we go out and we hire another contractor to come in and mill and overlay it, and then we pursue these responsible parties for the cost of that.
I, I agree, but we paid a good lump of, of sum of money to, uh, consultant to oversee this process, and Tim's got other stuff on his plate, and I don't want him to have to manage funding the contractor and, and unless Chris wants to find someone else, if WW won't play ball, but I would rather not, Tim, take on that responsibility of bird-dogging this thing.
Well, I, I 100% agree with that. I think we would lean on you guys, then...
To find someone else.
To find a contractor to come in and build it according to spec.
Yeah, and I, I can do that. I will say I expect to have trouble finding a contractor to agree to do it, um, mostly because they probably, I would, they're, they're, I would say they're, they're competitors, but they're also just, uh, they can understand the construction. This time of year, they're gonna say, "We're not gonna, I'm not gonna get involved."
There's no way.
They're not gonna do that.
This year, if you found somebody that would do it before it freezes up, you wouldn't want them to do it.
Right.
So...
So, as far as anything going to the contractor at this point, um, usually it gets to liquidate damages. I take my name off it as far as the letterhead goes. The letterhead would be city of Henderson, so, um, communication will be forward. I guess I could certainly draft something, but I think it should come from city of Henderson, um, and, uh...
For what?
Any, any communication to the contractor regarding damages, so I can talk to the contractor.
We can, I can send that out.
That might be good, yeah, so I just, um, I, my weight in it is a little less than the city's would be as far as, um, yeah, what's needed, so I usually have the communication come from city.
Right. All right. I think we're done. So, just kind of a recap, we're pursuing a mill and overlay at this point. We're gonna continue our discussions with the contractor. We're gonna try to come up with a solution. If we can't, then we'll look at other avenues. Exactly. Another contractor drawing on a bond, likely to be done in 2026. Exactly. All right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We'll continue to push them on the punch list items, so... Yes, sir.
Can I have just a couple minutes of your time?
You are?
Eric Lewis.
From?
Uh, and, uh, head softball coach, Mr. Hipson Softball Association. I talked to Tim a month or so ago just about, uh, an idea that we've got about Bender Park not looking for any money. I just wanna...
This is a special meeting. What? We'd have to, we'd have to push it to next week. This isn't special. Unfortunately, we can only talk about things that are on this agenda, this particular agenda. We don't have, we don't have that on... I'm not trying to push you off.
Nope.
Please come back next Wednesday.
We'll put you, yeah.
Fair enough.
All right.
Thanks.
Later.
Yeah.
Um, so one hypothetical I was just gonna ask about, if the contractor was to, um, I've, I've asked for options for moving the pipelines, if they are providing, if we waterblast it and have the city review it after that work's done?
No.
Okay. So, that might be a way to get it restripped prior to next spring, so that's why I'm asking that question, so...
No, I, no, absolutely not.
If they're gonna do that on their dime and their time, so it looks right until then, but...
Then we have the right to reject it.
That, that's more what I'm getting at, is if it's something that you'd wanna be able to review, if they did the work, reviewed it, and if I'm gonna talk to the striping contractor at some point here, and I'm sure they're gonna say this and do the best thing ever, and I, I don't know if that's necessarily the case, but they know their stuff usually better than I do, so...
Well, that's why we have you.
Well, no, that's, that's why I'm asking if it's something that we should, should allow them to do.
Right now, it's mill and overlay.[1783.78]